Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Halton Catholic District School Board Policy Committee Meeting on March 8, 2022. Please be advised that this meeting is being livestreamed on the Board's YouTube channel and will also be available for future viewing. We'll call this meeting to order, and we'll start with our land acknowledgement.
Halton, as we know it today.
Is rich in the history and modern traditions.
Of many First Nations and the Métis.
From the lands of the Anishinaabe.
To the Atawandaran.
The Haudenosaunee.
And the Métis.
These lands surround you greatly.
Are steeped in Indigenous history.
As we gather today.
On these treaty learn.
Our Catholic social teachings.
Call us in solidarity.
With our Indigenous brothers and sisters.
To honor and respect.
Four directions.
Lands.
Waters.
Plants.
Animals.
And ancestors.
That walked before us.
All of these wonderful elements of creation exist.
Gifted to us by our Creator God.
We acknowledge and thank.
The Mississaugas of the credit First Nation.
For being stewards of this traditional territory.
Please join us in the sign of our faith, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. In the brokenness of a world painful for so many, we run to the open wings of Jesus, the Mother Hen, who longs to gather her chicks under her wings. Lord Jesus, you're a place of safety for everyone, but especially for the most vulnerable. As we celebrate today, the achievements of women throughout the world, we recognize that in the past, and even yet, those achievements are overshadowed or downplayed because of a skewed gendered bias. Or is it prejudice? As we celebrate women in business, in science, in the arts, in medicine, and in homes, and fields, and kitchens, we acknowledge the societal and cultural influences that treat women as second-class. In every education denied, in every female demeaned, in every girl used and abused for her body, we diminish our own humanity. Please forgive us. Lord Jesus, your open wings are welcoming, and that welcome exposes your breast. You are willing to risk loving even when it makes you more vulnerable. Help us, we pray, to be ready to follow your example. Inspire us to care selfishly and generously without counting the cost, simply because all people in your eyes are worth loving for all eternity. In your name, Lord Jesus, we pray. Amen. Welcome, everyone. We'll move on to item two. There is one change to the agenda under Action Item 6.2. That has been deferred to the next meeting. Can, that being said, are there any other changes or amendments to the agenda? Okay, can I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented with amendments?
Moved, O'Brien? Moved by trustee O'Brien.
Sorry, moved by trustee, moved by trustee O'Brien, seconded by trustee Agnew. Anybody opposed? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item, item number three, Declaration of Conflict of Interest. Trustees, do we have any conflicts? Seeing none. Item number four, delegations. There are no delegations this evening. So we'll move on to item five, Approval of the Minutes from the February 8, 2022 policy meeting. May I have a mover?
Agnew.
Moved by trustee Agnew. Do I have a seconder?
I'll second it.
Seconded by trustee O'Hearn Chernotta. Anybody opposed? Seeing none opposed. It's unanimous, moving on to item six. Item 6.1, Policy II-37, Volunteers in Catholic Schools. Trustees, can I have?
I'd like to abstain.
Trustee DeRosa, I have already called the vote and moved on to the next.
I didn't get to the mic early enough. My apologies.
Okay.
So I'd like to record an abstention.
It's already been closed, the vote, so. Moving on to this, so trustees, can I please have a mover that the following recommendation be presented to the board?
I'll move it.
Moved by trustee Agnew, seconded by?
Trustee O'Brien.
Trustee O'Brien. Thank you, trustees. Superintendent Bakich, we'll hand the floor over to you.
Thank you, and through you, Madam Chair. For your consideration this evening, our revisions to Policy II-37, Volunteers in Catholic Schools, as recommended by staff. Policy II-37, Volunteers in Catholic Schools, was reviewed as part of the regular review cycle. This policy provides direction that volunteers are required to follow when participating in school community activities and events. Minor changes have been made and include updating the principles and requirements to reflect current language and practice. Minor housekeeping changes have been made. The revised Policy II-37, Volunteers in Catholic Schools, is attached for review and consideration by the Policy Committee. Happy to answer any questions trustees may have.
Thank you, Superintendent Bakich. Trustees, I'll open the floor to any questions. Trustees, any questions? Seeing none, we'll take it to a recorded vote. Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa? Trustee DeRosa?
Abstain.
Trustee Ian Tomasi? I'm not sure if he's on. I don't think he's on. Okay, sorry about that. Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hearn Chernotta?
In favor.
And do we have any students on this evening? I don't think I saw any, but I just want to double check. Okay, trustee Guzzo is also in favor. Moving on to item 6.3. Thank you, trustees. So item 6.3. Trustees, can I have somebody move that the Policy Committee recommend that Policy II-44, Student Mental Health and Wellbeing, be forwarded to the March 22, 2022 Regular Board Meeting for Approval?
I'll move it.
Moved by trustee O'Hearn Chernotta, seconded by?
I'll second.
Trustee Agnew, thank you. Trustees, I know that this, this policy has been sent to CAC as well, so we will hand this over to Superintendent Ballow.
Thank you, and through you, Madam Chair. The purpose is to provide for the consideration of the Policy Committee meeting revisions to Policy II-44, Student Mental Health and Wellbeing, as recommended by staff, and in consultation with the Special Education Advisory Committee. Policy II-44, Student Mental Health and Wellbeing, was last reviewed in November 2018 and is in keeping with the policy review cycle. The policy has been updated by staff in consultation with CAC members at the February 28 CAC meeting. Revisions were made throughout the policy to reflect current and consistent processes, terminology, and title changes. Policy II-45, Equity and Inclusion, or Inclusive Education, has been added as an associated policy, and the application and scope as well as principles have been expanded. References have been reviewed and amended, and a definition section has been added to the policy. I do have our Chiefs of Mental Health Services with us this evening as well, Jane Atchison, Michael Seema, and Oliver Foise, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Superintendent Ballow. I know that there was a lot of work that was put into this, so we've got some time to have a good discussion on this. So we'll open the floor to trustees. Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank you, through Madam Chair, to the people on staff that presented this. Love the changes, love, especially under board responsibility and effective prevention. Think that's great. Why did I draw your attention to one of the bullets under Principles, the last bullet? Can we go there? It says, "Ensuring that all interventions center human rights-based, anti-racist, oppressive frameworks to eliminate systemic barriers to mental health and well-being." The word center, like, to me, it almost sounds like what we're saying is that all mental health issues are human rights-based and anti-racist. I'm just getting that feeling with the word center. Can you speak to that, anybody?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yep, and thank you, and through you, Madam Chair. I can call Oliver Foise to speak about that. He also has an example he can speak to.
Oliver, are you there?
Yes.
Oh, there you are.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. I was caught off guard a bit with the, with the example that you're referring to, Stephanie.
So, yes, Oliver, I think the example was with regards to psychological assessments. You had given that example, it was in our notes when we talked about it.
Yes, I'm sorry. I apologize. Yes, so, so when, when we look at our, our psychological assessments, for example, we now make sure that we include a look at the, the mental health and well-being of students when we do our assessments, and we look at the anti-oppressive, anti-racist, and human rights-based perspective in the way that we see, we look at the students' lived experience and the families' lived experiences. So we look at all our instruments, and the same thing we, by the way, have done, has been done by our special language pathologists as well, looking at all our instruments, considering that we, when we do assessments, that we don't select tests that may be culturally biased, that may be having a culturally unfair bias towards students that come from a background where they have not been exposed to the content. So as well, looking at what are, what is the family's perspective on formalized assessment, and how do they perceive us performing assessments with their children? So the whole approach to looking at mental health and student needs has to be reviewed in the context of our service to students.
Thank you. Trustee O'Brien, does that address your concerns?
Well, not really. I'm looking at the word center. I hear what you're saying. I know we have to take that into account with all our assessments. I guess the word center is just, I'm feeling a little uncomfortable with it. It sounds like that's the, the driving force, the center of the assessment.
Thank you, trustee O'Brien. I'm not sure who wants to answer that. Superintendent Ballow, do you want to just address the centerpiece?
Yeah, I think just to reinforce, and I think someone else has their hand up there, but I think just to reinforce what Oliver has said, is that when we do look at any of the interventions that we're offering our students, that they do center on the human rights of all students. So that would include all aspects of human rights. I'm not sure if someone has their hand up, but I know Seda was also involved in the.
She does. Seda has her hand up. Like, I can put it. Seda, did you want to weigh in on that, that piece?
Good evening, and through you, Madam Chair. Yeah, so when you talk about centering human rights and equity and anti-racist, anti-oppressive frameworks, it really comes from the understanding that everything that we do at the Board, you know, with its instruments, programs, services, curriculum, that it really looks at who are those that are perhaps, you know, that are disproportionately impacted, whose voices are not heard, you know, are there practices that are inadvertently discriminating against certain groups? So that sort of approach in terms of looking at making sure that we are inclusive of all our student populations, and that we look at all programs and instruments through that lens of, again, you know, who is being disproportionately impacted, that that becomes a way of looking at everything. And that also, again, goes back to our Equity and Inclusive Education policy, where one of the first pillars talks about the fact that all programs, policies at the Board have to really be approached, and services have to be approached through this idea of making sure that, you know, human rights are upheld, and, and, you know, when any kind of discrimination based on any of the code-protected grounds would then be contrary to that. So it's sort of linked to our ENI policy and our commitment to every student to achieve, believe, and belong in all student achievement and well-being.
Thank you, Seda. Oliver, did you want to add to that?
I think that Seda has, has well expressed the Principles. I just wanted to add maybe a very, very small little example that comes to mind, too. For example, we recently did, did a training based, hosted by School Mental Health Ontario for mental health workers, that, that trains a digital intervention for students who have social-emotional problems, and even in, within that specific model of, of intervention for cognitive behavioral intervention, they had looked at the, the specifics of, of any, any examples that are being used, as well as, for example, looking at, if we have a student who has been a victim of discrimination, we have to be careful not to try to say, okay, we're going to make this student feel better about how they feel about this situation, if the situation was a, a trauma for them based on, based on a racist or oppressive experience. So even into like, the, the very specifics of our interventions, we go and look at it, at each of our practices to see whether it fits with that perspective that Seda has outlined on a, on a more bigger scale.
Thank you, Oliver. Trustee O'Brien, do you have a follow-up question?
Well, I'm still a couple of other words, etc. I'm thinking of a child from, say, a white privileged background. Would that be the center of an assessment? Right? I would prefer passing this policy of that word was another word. It's, I, I don't feel it would be the driving force to find every mental health issue. And center means it's like, the most important thing to me.
Right. Okay, so you're suggesting something else. However, the way it's written is, it's the center of the human rights base, so that would be anything code-protected. So it wouldn't be a white privilege. White privilege isn't a code-protected ground.
But it is a mental health policy, and it does say, "Ensuring that all interventions center human rights base." Well, wonder, again, if it is a person from a white privileged background, would that, in doing an assessment, would you use a human rights based as the center of your approach to a psych assessment? It feels like a reach to me. Just telling you how I feel.
Okay, no, fair enough. Not to dismiss anybody's feelings by any means. Seda, I see you have your, your hand up. Did you want to?
Yes, again, through you, Madam Chair. Maybe I can explain that a little bit better, that, you know, when we talk about rights-based, it is sort of understanding that human beings have multiple aspects of their identity that come together, right? So race is one of them, but ability is a different one. Gender is another one. Sex is another one. Sexual orientation. So for any human being, when you look at that human rights base, you take into account all those different grounds that are protected by the Human Rights Code, and make sure that none of those code-protected grounds are disregarded or discriminated against. So whether it is a child that's white or racialized, there's other aspects of their identity that are also protected. So we call that an intersectional approach, so taking the full child and all aspects of the child into consideration. So it's not to exclude, but to really look at a comprehensive view of all aspects of a child's identity when you're even looking at that through that rights-based approach.
I agree with that. Sorry, Madam Chair.
Okay, go ahead. Thank you, Seda. Go ahead.
Seda and team, which should be open to another word besides center?
Through you. I can take a feel from the, the other trustees. I'm assuming is what the, is what has been brought forward by staff, that there's a reason for it to say center. So trustees, is, is there, is there any other concern? Trustee O'Brien has raised that center has, is causing some difficulties for him. Is there any other trustees that feel that center should be changed? Okay, trustee O'Brien, I don't see, nobody has said anything in regards.
I see one hand up, Madam Chair.
Oh, okay, so we're going to do it that way? Okay, is that trustee Carabella, is that what you're responding to?
Yes, I was just wondering what would be a suggested word at this point, if, if trustee O'Brien has a suggestion.
Well, I think the question is, 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 is anybody else uncomfortable with the word center? I don't think he has a word. He hasn't brought forward a word. So are you not comfortable with the word center, trustee Carabella?
It's not a matter of comfort, but sometimes another word can be more, can be explored.
Okay, so, but we're, right now, we're exploring whether or not you're comfortable with the word center, because this is new language that's been brought forward by staff, which includes our superintendent of, who holds a portfolio for mental health. We've got our chief psychologist here. We've got, we've got our human rights and equity. We have, who else am I missing? So the question is, is there somebody else? Is there another word that, if people don't feel comfortable with the word center, then we can explore it. So I'm going to ask again.
I can make a suggestion, Madam Chair, if nobody else does.
Okay, well, I don't think anybody else is saying that they're not comfortable with the word center, trustee O'Brien. So I don't know that it's worth exploring at this point.
No worries.
Okay. Is there any other questions, trustees? Thank you, trustee O'Brien. Seeing none, we'll take it to a recorded vote. Thank you very much to everybody for all of your work on this. There was a lot of work done on this, and thank you for, thank you for everything, and thank you for being here. Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa? Trustee DeRosa? Moving on to trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
Opposed.
Trustee O'Hearn Chernotta?
In favor.
I am also in favor. That's five in favor, one opposed. The, the motion passes. It'll be brought to the next meeting. Thank you, trustees. Moving on to item 6.4. This is Policy V-01. Trustees, can I have a mover that the Policy Committee recommends that Policy V-01, Use of School Grounds and Community Use of School Facilities, be forwarded to the March 22, 2022 Regular Board Meeting for Approval?
Moved, O'Brien?
Moved by trustee O'Brien, seconded by?
Agnew.
Trustee Agnew, thank you. Superintendent Merrick, do we have you on the line?
I'm here, Madam Chair.
We'll hand it over to you, Superintendent Merrick.
Thanks. This will be really quick, because there's only housekeeping changes to this policy. So you can see from the, the package, only some minor housekeeping changes. So it's pretty much as-is, with a few words, I guess, the Board taken out and HCSB put in. So happy to answer any questions that trustees may have on this, on this policy.
Thank you, Superintendent Merrick. Trustees, I'll open the floor. Is there any questions? All right, seeing none, we'll take it to a recorded vote. Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
Favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hearn Chernotta?
In favor.
And trustee Guzzo's also in favor, so the motion passes. Thank you, Superintendent Merrick. Moving on to item 7.1. Trustees, here are our discussion items. 7.1 is Transparency and Accountability in Executive Compensation. So this was brought forward, there was a discussion from a motion at the last Board Meeting, as requested. It has been put on the agenda to a discussion, so I'm going to hand it over to trustee Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So there was a motion at the last meeting, we had, we had, which is covered by this policy, and we haven't had a chance as a group to review it. When I looked at the purpose of the policy, it, it states that the Board encourages practices that attract, retain, and reward high-performance employees who are effective at implementing the goal set out in the Board's strategic plan. Director Daley gave some, some further context to the intent that the policy was put forward. And the challenge that I see when I read through the, the policy, I don't see that it's aligned with the purpose. I don't see that the requirements would actually achieve that purpose. And in some cases, to me, it looks like it actually would, would go the other way, and it would potentially cause some, some difficulties in, in, with our, with those who are being reviewed and, and being scrutinized by, by the Board of Trustees. You know, when we talk about the role of the trustees is nose-in, fingers-out, to me, this looks like there's a little. To me, this, um, looks like there's a little too much of the fingers in. So, uh, I thought it was important that we bring it to the table for us to discuss it. And if there is, uh, is interest, then we can, um, can work on it in the policy. And then if, if nobody sees it the way I see it, then, um, then that's, that's okay. But I think it's important for us to, uh, to discuss it.
Thank you, uh, trustee Murphy. So, uh, trustee O'Brien, I see your hands up. Uh, I'm assuming it's for this item?
It is, Madam Chair.
Okay, you have the floor. Thank you, trustee.
Uh, thank you, trustee Murphy. Um, Madam Chair, just a little tidy up item before we delve too much into this. I've looked at the policy. It under, um, contract, it says, though the director is solely responsible for the hiring of all superintendents. I believe this policy was written before we actually did sit on hiring committees. I wonder if we could maybe tighten that up. So it doesn't say that trustees now are part of the hiring process. Just a tidying item first, Madam Chair.
So.
Contracts, it does say, though the director is solely responsible.
Okay, so this is, this is a, a discussion item at this point, trustee O'Brien. So we can absolutely discuss that if we think that there are items that need to be cleaned up, um, we can put them forward and then they'll come, it'll come back as an action item at the next policy meeting.
Perfect, Madam Chair.
Okay, so your suggestion is under approval of contracts?
Um, yes, I wonder if we could say, take out the word solely, um, or could we say the director and the trustees are solely responsible? Now that we are hiring, sitting on hiring panels, which we were not doing, I believe, when this policy was made.
Uh, so let's, let's take a look at this for a second. So maybe we can, and I apologize, Claudia, is there a way to pull up the, um, the, uh, the executive hiring policy as well? Um, because I don't believe, I, I, and trustee Agnew just made a fair point. We don't necessarily, we don't do the hiring. We do sit on the interview panel, but it's on the recommendation of the director.
Is that true? I mean, maybe I'm wrong. I understood that.
That's okay. Well, let's pull up, let's pull up the policy and I just put Claudia on the spot. So give us just one second, trustee O'Brien, and we'll have a look at it.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, so this is not the. Oh, thank you. It's procedure VI 28. Thank you. I think it's linked in this, is it not? Nope. Okay, so it's procedure VI 28. Do we have Andrea sharing it now?
Yes, I am. I'm looking for the procedure.
Which one is it? II I 11.
Okay.
Bullet. Okay, so it's under the hiring committee, under policy II dash 11. So if we can pull up II dash 11, Ms. Swenden, that'd be great.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to, I can pull up that, that procedure, that policy. Are you thinking there will be changes? Because if so, I know.
No, we're doing it changes. It's just to make sure that.
Okay, let me pull it up.
No changes, no changes. We just need to see what it says.
All right.
Thank you. Can I ask, somebody's, uh, somebody's microphone is on and I keep hearing cell phone chimes. Can, can we make sure that all of our, our, our mics are off, please? Thank you. Okay, so it's under principles? Uh, fourth or fifth bullet? No, it's not there.
Sorry, it's under requirements.
It's under require, it's under requirements. Yeah, okay. Trustees of the Halton Catholic District School Board shall entrust the day-to-day management of the board to staff through the Director of Education or designate. Recruitment for positions will be done as widely as inappropriate.
I'm on policy II I 11.
II I 11. Is this not II? Yeah, this is II 11. Yep. Yep. Can you scroll up, Andrea?
The second last bullet from the bottom of page.
Oh, there it is. Yep. I jumped one too far, sorry. The Board of Trustees through a hiring committee composed of three trustees, the secretary slash director, the executive officer of human resources, and a senior staff member will perform the function of selecting the candidate for supervisory office and executive director. The final candidate in each hiring situation will be presented to the board for approval in camera. So so it's not as clear as we thought it was, is it? So the practice that we have used in the last hiring is, is the candidates were, I can talk about this, right? The selection process. It is, so the way it worked, and I, and I sat on one of the, one of the committee selections, was, um, with all those members present, and then it was done by a ranking system and it was done collaboratively. And then if there was, um, equal, if let's say, uh, candidates scored equally, we went on the recommendation of the director and it was the director who, who made it because that makes the most sense because the director is their employee. So, um, it's still presented to the board for a final approval, which is what the other policy still states. So I don't know that we need to change that, trustee O'Brien. If you think that we do, it's something, if, if we're gonna bring it back for an action, it's something that you can put a forward, sorry, trustee, uh, trustee, Director Daley?
Um, it might be something as simple as just listing the associated policy in this policy. We don't have any associated policy.
Yep. That's true. Okay, good point. Trustee O'Brien, uh, Director Daley, I don't know if you could hear him, made a good point. It might be something as simple as, uh, referencing this policy in, um, I 45.
Uh, no worries, Madam Chair. Um, it sounds good to me. I just wanted a consistency between two policies, um, just to be, um, thorough. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so something we can look at. Um, trustee Murphy, you have your hand up.
Uh, thank you. Um, is Superintendent Oldman on with us?
Yes, she is. Superintendent Oldman, can you, uh, trustee, uh, trustee Murphy, did you have a question for her?
Yes, I have a question. Uh, so, um, uh, obviously, given your expertise in human resources and, and vast experience, both in the private and public sector, uh, in your opinion, does the purpose and the principle align on this policy? And given the requirements of this policy, do you think it will achieve its purpose?
May I, Madam Chair?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. And through you. Um, I suppose it, it's, it's, it's a broad purpose, um, in, in many facets, uh, in terms of, it encompasses without a doubt, um, some of the recruitment elements. So I think, uh, Director Daley's, you know, note on, on reference may be of some support. I appreciate it also maybe contemplate a time in which executive compensation was in, um, its own different place, uh, provincially. And I know that's, there's been some evolution into that end. So I suppose it's a balance of, of obligation under the Ed Act. And then, and then I forget, it's a further extension of what we're intending because I, I think some of that scope that's outlined perhaps within the purpose, is, is, is maybe not fully as representative as it could be based on the landscape of executive compensation at this time.
Trustee Murphy?
Uh, thank you. Um, I, I looked around to, uh, the board, our surrounding boards and I didn't find any policy that was similar at all. So, um, I would like, I would like to get, um, have it, the policy reviewed with some recommendations, uh, coming back. I'm not sure if, if, what the, the temperature of the room is, but, um, uh, you know, I, I see that there's, there's contradictions, um, in its purpose and the requirements, and I don't see it being able to, uh, achieve its goal effectively or as effectively as, as it could. Um, so I would like it, uh, I would like it to be reviewed.
Uh, thanks, trustee Murphy. Um, I think Director Daley can maybe offer some insight on, yeah, just give me a second. He can offer some insight on, um, the, um, the, the creation of this policy that might help us all understand a little bit better. Just bear with us a second because we're in the same room. We have to be mindful of our mics. Just one second.
Sorry about that. I, I, I didn't unmute myself. So just a, a little bit of, um, a little bit of background to this policy. Uh, so it was quite a bit of time in the making. It did come to the bo, uh, the policy table and board as a new policy. It did go out for stakeholder feedback at one point. There wasn't a lot of feedback, but it did go through the process. At the time, the policy was finished up in the fall of 2018. There was, uh, an indication from the government at the time that, um, a new regulation would be coming out with regards to compensation framework and, uh, performance pay, uh, which was kind of new to the sector. So I think this policy kind of was preparing for that. That direction from the government really, uh, didn't come through, uh, because of the freeze on executive compensation. So, uh, much of this policy is really geared towards, um, how senior or how superintendents, when we were looking at changing the, the compensation envelope, uh, how would we achieve that? And none of those regulations actually have come into effect yet. So it was written, uh, at a time. Um, and I think that explains one of the reasons why, um, trustee Murphy had said he looked at some other boards. At the time when this policy was passed in November of 2018, I believe we were the only board or one of a few boards that had, had got this far. Um, but that's more of a recollection than, than anything. So, so as I think as Superintendent Oldman, uh, kind of said, it, it did, it, it did come about at a certain time, when we thought there was gonna be, uh, further changes coming from the government. And, and those changes, those compensation frameworks, uh, haven't come to us yet.
Trustee Murphy, does that make sense?
Uh, yes, yeah, it, it makes sense. I, it, I'm looking at it through the lens of where we are today. And, you know, I've, I, I'm a broken record. I, I've been managing people for 30 years and have done hundreds and hundreds of appraisals and, and, um, I see the way this is written as being problematic in this, uh, environment that we're in. And I, and so therefore I think it should be reviewed.
Okay. Uh, thank you, trustee Murphy. Uh, trustee Carabella, you have the floor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I was there when this policy started and as, uh, Director Daley was saying that, uh, waiting for these regulations, um, so they can still come. I think this policy is, is about transparency and accountability. And so, um, certain aspects should be put into effect that, that we can follow. I, I, you know, I'm, I'm hesitant to, to change unless we've already, uh, done parts of it or wait for the regulations to come out. Um, it is about transparency and accountability. Uh, this is something that all ratepayers, um, expect as well. And most trustees say that that's what they want to achieve at the board. So, um, I'd be very hesitant right now, seeing that it is new and that it had gone out to community consultation. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, trustee O'Brien, do you have a question, a comment?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I asked my question is trustee Murphy, if he's willing to answer it. Um, I've been listening to what he has said. Um, he's mentioned the word problematic. He's mentioned the, uh, old catchphrase, um, fing, uh, noses in, fingers out. I wonder if he'd be able to elaborate more on why this would be problematic? Because I wonder if his vision of why this is problematic is the same as mine. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Sure. I, you know, you know, I mean, Mr. O'Brien, I'd always, uh, trustee O'Brien, I'm always willing to chat. Um, yeah, I think, I think so, there are no, um, opportunities for performance-based raises. So, so we go through the annual review and you have employee A who's exemplary is, does everything, is a rock star for all intents and purposes. And the result is nothing. You have potentially another employee who maybe is struggling and is not effective, and they're, both of their results are the exact same. And so that's being brought to the Board of Trustees. And that exposes or, or, uh, amplifies a disparity. And that's a problem.
Thank you, uh, trustee Murphy. Trustee O'Brien, do you have a, a follow-up?
Um, yes, I do, actually, if trustee Murphy's willing to go there. Um, I want to just concur a bit with trustee Murphy. I, I myself don't see a need to see any per, performance appraisals myself. Um, I, I, I trust our director that he is more than capable of doing that. And I don't think it would help me in my role as trustee to have to know that because I, we do evaluate him. Um, I'm looking at all of the policy itself. It does, um, mention contracts and the trustees approving that. Um, I wonder if trustee Murphy sees that as being problematic? I mean, it does state that we are to approve the contracts of every new hire, I believe. Our contracts will be approved by trustees before being signed.
Yep. Yeah, I'd, I'd love to comment on that. I, I agree with you fully. We. Yep, yeah, I'd, I'd love to comment on that. I, I agree with you fully. We, in my opinion, trustees don't need to see the reviews. And, and again, it's, it can become problematic. It's a relationship between the SO and his, and their direct boss. It's important for us. So here's the difference between nose in and fingers in. Nose in is Director Daly, did you do the reviews? What date were they were, were done on? You could give us an overview, your overall impression. That's, that's nose in. Fingers in is, is let me see your evaluation of employee X and let me critique it, verify it, vote on it, what, whatever the case may be. So, so I think you and I are aligned. I think it's important that we know that it's done because it is a valuable process. How it's done and how it's, it's put on display, for lack of a better way of, of saying it, I think can be the problem. You know, the, the policy of approving the contracts has been voted on and the majority of trustees had voted that way, that it's important for the Board of Trustees to approve that contract. I didn't vote for that. So that's my opinion on it. As, as a trustee, I have to abide by it and accept it, but I did not vote for it.
Thank you. Thanks, trustee Murphy and trustee O'Brien. So I'm going to move on to, we've got trustee Ian Tomasi is next on the speaker's list. Again, trustees, just a reminder, this is just a discussion. We're not making any changes at this point. Any trustee can bring policies forward to, if they have proposed changes, so. Trustee Ian Tomasi, you have the floor.
Through you, Madam Chair. For, sorry for being late. So my question is to Secretary Daly. Can you point to where in this particular policy we do not follow the requirements under executive compensation legislation? Where we don't follow public sector disclosure, because this policy only speaks to and addresses regulations that are in place and must be followed. Public sector does not give out bonuses. So when that was inserted in this particular policy, it was done so in anticipation of perhaps the government instituting that. Having said that, everything else in this particular policy is a direct copy of the legislations that it's governed by. So I don't understand what trustee Murphy is talking about when he says he's reviewed specific boards, because I can tell you, every board follows the legislation that governs this particular policy. They do not have it in this exact format, but they refer to executive compensation, both from a labor perspective, as, along with legislation that governs grid movement, which is the way government works. So I don't understand why this policy even needs to be reviewed. The only thing that would be required to be reviewed in this particular policy would be updates that will be forthcoming, which are going to be legislative changes. The reason this particular policy is not only still current, but in effect, is because there's a freeze. So this particular policy speaks to the freeze because it stopped in August 18th, 2018, and there's no amendments or changes. So where are we going with these changes?
Thank you, trustee Ian Tomasi. There are no changes at this point. As I stated before you spoke, this is a discussion item and trustee O'Brien, I mean, trustee Murphy is entitled to his opinions, as are you. So he has brought it as a discussion item. Moving on to trustee DeRosa.
Madam Chair, I have a follow-up, please?
But do you actually have a question, trustee Ian Tomasi? Because it sounded more like an opinion, so.
On set, my question was, where does this policy air or contradict the legislation that it follows?
That's not, that's. Trustee Ian Tomasi, that's, that's not what anybody said. Trustee Murphy has brought this forward as a discussion item. I haven't heard anybody say that it contradicts. So we're going to move on to trustee DeRosa. You have the floor.
That's my question to the secretary, Madam Chair.
But, but you've said that, you've said that, but you've said that Director Daly stated that. He has not stated that. So.
He has. He talked about intent. This is not about intent. This is.
Trustee Ian Tomasi, don't mistake, it was how this policy came into effect. He gave a little bit of history on when he first started, how it came into effect, and then he asked trustee Carabella to refer. So he did not state that. So we're going to move on to trustee DeRosa. Trustee DeRosa.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a question, and anybody can answer it, trustee Murphy, because he's started this, this discussion, maybe Secretary Daly. You know, having a discussion is, is always a good thing over a situation like that remain unclear. But what's going on through my mind and listening to the parties weighing in on this, is what is compelling us to even consider this, this change? Are we trying to make the change in order to fit a regulation that is not met currently? Or are we trying to fit the policy to a particular circumstance that exists today or existed at some point in time? What are we trying to do here?
Thank you, trustee DeRosa. And maybe trustee Murphy, maybe you can explain. I, trustee DeRosa, I don't think you were at our last board meeting. This was a result to defer this to policy. So trustee Murphy had, had moved it and was carried. So trustee Murphy, if you can just maybe, if you don't mind.
Certainly.
To trustee DeRosa, why you brought it here as a discussion item?
Okay, so first of all, this policy has not been reviewed. It's to be reviewed in this schedule, and there was a, a motion put forward that falls under this policy. So I thought it was important to review this policy. So the purpose states that it's to encourage practices to attract, retain, and reward high-performing employees. That is not in line with the principles. And as I stated before, there is elements in here which are not required, which in this environment could be problematic. So when we have trouble retaining or attracting or rewarding, I don't think it's, it's good to add fuel to the fire. All of this is based on my opinion, which people could agree with or could disagree with. I have the right as a trustee to bring it forward. It hasn't been reviewed. I think it's timely. If there is will and opinion to have a look at it, that's great. If there isn't, then so be it.
Madam Chair, may I have a follow-up?
Thank you, trustee Murphy. Yep, trustee DeRosa, do you have a question?
Well, I think it's a question. It's a follow-up. I think I, I heard in the dissertation that this policy is not appropriate in a situation where you have a low-performing employee versus a high-performing employee, who, and in the end, those two employees don't get, or get recognized the same way, primarily if they're going to get a raise, they get a, an equal raise or vice versa. I, I'd like to make the point, and in my experience with evaluating quite a few employees and senior ones, is that the point of recognizing high-performance employees doesn't necessarily always translate in additional, in additional monies, especially in an environment like ours, where it's highly regulated by government. I think high-performance employees are worthwhile identifying and recognizing for all the other reasons why why they need to be recognized and updated, as well as low-performance employees with the intent of giving them feedback and the intent of improving their, their, their performance. I think the interest of the board in identifying high-performance employees and, and low-performance employees is very related to our function of trying to improve the board's performance in terms of quality of staff, in terms of career succession. So the idea or the concept that, that employees should not be evaluated along the way because eventually the salary increase is going to be, is, is going to be the same is a concept that, that ignores all of the other intangibles that motivate employees to keep high-performance standards and to perform well, because it's not only about money, it's about career, it's about job satisfaction. And most of all, it's about giving employees, deserving employees, positive feedback where positive feedback is due. So I guess that's a comment rather than a question, but I will leave it there.
Thank you, trustee DeRosa. So we haven't heard from trustee O'Hearn Tronota yet, so I'm gonna, trustee O'Brien, I'll come back to you, okay? Trustee O'Hearn Tronota, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and happy International Women's Day to you and all the other women on this call. I would just like to state very quickly and briefly that, you know, with all the discussion we're having about this policy and procedure, that I think that just tells us that we need to bring it back to policy. As an action item, we can have fulsome debate, we can make changes or not, but I think just all this discussion we're having now warrants an action item in the next policy meeting. So I would vote for that definitely.
Thank you, trustee O'Hearn Tronota. Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With your permission, I wouldn't mind delving this into a little deeper and respond to trustee Murphy's response to my question. I do think what he said about noses in and fingers out is something we really got to keep in mind. He made a good statement there. What does that mean for us? While, again, I, I have no need to see any superintendent's appraisal. I, I trust the director to do that. I'm looking at the Ed Act here and, but as far as contracts and grid movement goes, because that comes under the finance part of it, it, it does say in the act, every board shall take steps to effectively use the resources entrusted to it, use the resources entrusted to it for the purposes of delivering effective and appropriate education and manage the resources entrusted to it in a manner that upholds public confidence. So I certainly would want to see those things taken out of the policy. I know we're going to be looking at this again in June or even sooner, but I, I'd just like to say that now, and I, and I will say it again. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, trustee O'Brien. Moving on, we have trustee Ian Tomasi. You have a comment?
Yes, I do. Through you, Madam Chair. So the whole education process speaks to appraisals. It's legislated. If you look at the regulations that are given to us by the Ministry of Education, most specifically Regulation 243, the whole process of appraising is part and parcel of all employees, starting from teachers, all the way up to the board performing an appraisal of its director, the secretary-director. So I don't understand how someone can stay, can say after three years sitting at the board that the whole performance issue and the appraisal issue is something that's not necessary. That's what education is built on. You do a review at the end of the year of all your staff. That also happens in industry.
Thank you, trustee Ian Tomasi. Just a quick question. I'm looking at Regulation 243. Is that the correct one? Because what comes up for me is schools, private schools and childcare centers.
I didn't say 243, Madam Chair. I says Regulation 234, and it speaks to principals, vice principals, and the, and, and the supervisory officers providing an appraisal of their subordinates. We in turn, as a board, provide an appraisal of the secretary-director, and the secretary-director has and is mandated, if you go into the executive compensation legislation, that he or she has to appraise each year the supervisory officer under his, his supervision.
Thank you, trustee Ian Tomasi. I do, I did pull up that regulation, but I, I'm, I'm having a hard time following you because the policy we're looking at is transparency, accountability, and executive compensation, not performance appraisals. And the regulation that you're referencing, 234, is principal and vice principal performance appraisal. So trustee Ian Tomasi.
So I understand.
You're asking us to, you're asking. No, I, I don't have a problem understanding. I'm trying to, yes, and this is the Education Act. It's trustee Ian Tomasi, I asked for you to clarify. You did. So then I went back to do it, and I'm telling you what I've pulled up. So thank you. But I, I'm going to be really clear. We're talking about, we're talking about the policy that is transparency and accountability in executive compensation. This isn't a performance evaluation policy. This isn't about that. This is about transparency and accountability in executive compensation. Trustee, you have the floor. No, you know what, trustee Ian Tomasi, you're cutting me off. You don't have the floor. You don't have the floor, trustee Ian Tomasi. Trustee Murphy, you have the floor.
To re, to reiterate and to be clear, at no time did anybody say that we're doing away with performance appraisals. What was discussed was it's problematic, what this policy states on how it's brought forward to the Board of Trustees. So that's what was discussed. Not one proposal was put forward, despite all the rhetoric that I'm hearing.
Thank you. Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
Madam Chair, I have a very simple question, because this is starting to become a little bit complicated and convoluted. Is what's being proposed here, the second look, is it with the intent of increasing transparency or limiting transparency?
There's, there's no intent of anything at this point, trustee DeRosa. This is a discussion item that trustee Murphy has brought to the table. And actually, he, it, it was brought to the table by way of board motion for a discussion. So that's what you're doing, and we're discussing it. So there is no intent at anything at this moment. It's a discussion.
So from my understanding, Madam Chair, all I really want to do, and in fact, that I didn't, I didn't participate in the board meeting because I wasn't there, is the effect is the effect of what trustee Murphy is proposing? Is it to increase, will it increase transparency or limit it?
Madam Chair, could I, can I answer this?
Absolutely.
I'm looking at the purpose. The purpose does not align with the policy. So we can ignore that, or we could examine it, understand it, and fix it. If we change the purpose, then it aligns with the policy, great. The reason why I brought this forward, because there's nothing in this policy that encourages us to attract and retain and reward employees. That's why it was brought forward. Again, despite all the rhetoric, pushback, whatever, it's, it's up to trustees. Do we want to look at it in policy or not? Let's just vote on it. There's no point in going in circles and discussing it, in my opinion, any further.
So Madam Chair, may I respond?
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Murphy. Do you have another question, trustee DeRosa? It's, again, this is a discussion item. There is no change as proposed. So do you have any question?
I, I think, I think I'm contributing to the discussion, Madam Chair.
As long as it's, I don't want to, and it's not a debate, though. That's what I'm trying, this, we're not supposed to, we're, we're, if it's, we're going to have meaningful discussion, I'm fine with, I'm fine with facilitating that. Again, as long as it's in reference to this policy.
So I, and I hear trustee Murphy quite loud and clear, and I'd like to say that in, in in support of reviewing this, if it increases transparency and it increases the feedback and it improves our employee, our employee management, if I can. the feedback and it improves our employee, our employee management, if I can call that, call it that, or our career management, then I would be, I would be in support of reviewing this policy. If it goes the other way, no, I wouldn't be. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee DeRosa. Uh, trustee Intomasi, do you have a question or a comment?
No, there's no point. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, trustees, trustee Murphy, uh, or any trustees, if we want to see this come back as an action item with some proposed changes. Um, you know the the process. Uh, just keep in mind that there is no meeting in for policy in April. So moving on to item.
May I give you some information?
No, we've moved on to the next thing. You can do that at miscellaneous, trustee Intomasi. Um, we're moving on to item eight, eight point one to eight point four are for trustees to review. You see, those are our administrative procedures uh that are associated with the policies that we just reviewed. Item eight point five is our upcoming agenda items. And we will move now to item nine miscellaneous. We don't have any miscellaneous items. Uh, trustee Carabella, you have your hand?
Yes, thank you.
You got to give me a second to have a break there, trustee Carabella. Go ahead. You have the floor.
My hand up was for way back when, when you were talking about all the procedures.
Oh, sorry. It just it just went up at eight eleven. What do you, what's your, what can I help you with, trustee Carabella?
So it is on page fifty-three or page four of six of the, hold on, Procedure V184, Catholic School Councils and Catholic Parent Involvement Committee.
Yes.
So I just want, it's under the membership.
Yeah.
I just like clarity on that because I'm trying to understand the change in numbers.
So. That came from, that came from CPIC. Um, and it's reflective of the CPIC committee that was agreed to from there. And because it's procedure, it has been made in consultation with the superintendent who oversees it, which is Superintendent Danofa, and the members of CPIC. Unfortunately, trustee Duert is not on the call tonight, but he was present at the um at the CPIC meeting as well. I had a conversation with the chair of CPIC and Superintendent Danofa as well, that this reflects the changes that were discussed and voted on at CPIC Council.
And is Superintendent Danofa there now?
She is. I believe she is.
So I just want an explanation. I'm not, I just like to know the reasoning behind it.
Uh, we just, I just explained it to you, but if you, if you'd like to hear.
Trustee.
It came from CPIC, trustee Carabella.
I know, but that doesn't explain the reasoning. I'm just curious to understand the reasoning for the change in the numbers. I'm not questioning.
Superintendent Danofa, can you maybe offer some light as to why CPIC decided to uh make the changes to align with their bylaws?
Sure. And through you, Madam Chair, trustee uh Carabella, to your question, CPIC has been reviewing the membership um since I took over overseeing CPIC as a senior and mint person last year um to align their membership more to what the makeup of our schools are right now. Um, when CPIC originally had this procedure and it was in their bylaws with the membership, um, the size of our district uh wasn't as large as it is right now, and our Milton schools were not as as many as we have right now. So to align it, before it was two from Oakville, two from Burlington, two members from uh North Halton with four members at large. But since the complement of membership right now, they were trying to align it even with the Board of Trustees. So they wanted to have it more reflective of the number of schools in Milton and the schools in Burlington and Oakville. So they decided they would try to go to three, three, and three with one member at large. And why they didn't do it sooner was because um the membership of a CPIC member is two year term. And so it aligned, if they ran the election for this year, which is supposed to be starting just now in March to April, um, it would align if we do it at this point. So that's why they brought it forward at this time. And so it really is just to balance it all out to have representation of CPIC from right across the districts in Halton.
Thank you, Superintendent Danofa. Uh, trustee Carabella, do you have any other questions?
Just a follow up question. Thank you. That's that's very clear. So I'm I'm understanding the the augmenting the numbers. And so why would the members at large go down from four to one? I would be expecting it to stay at four.
Through you, Madam Chair. So trustee Carabella, there's only ten members on CPIC.
Right.
So by going three, so Burlington got increased to three from two, Oakville got increased to three from two, and then North Halton got increased from three to two. So that's an additional member per area plus then which would have left only one at large member.
Okay, you know, I had forgotten about the maximum limit. Thank you. Okay.
No problem.
Thank you, Superintendent Danofa. Moving on to item number nine miscellaneous items. We do not have any miscellaneous items. Um, moving on to item ten, no correspondence in this meeting. Item eleven in camera, there's no need to move into camera. Um, number twelve, can we have a motion to excuse trustee Duert?
Moved, O'Brien.
Moved by trustee O'Brien. Thank you. Seconded by.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Seconded by trustee O'Hearn Tronota. Um, can I have a motion to adjourn? Moved by trustee Agnew. Seconded by.
O'Brien.
Trustee O'Brien. Uh, anybody opposed? Thank you, trustees. Uh, trustee Intomasi, can you lead us in the closing prayer?
Please join me in the sign of our faith, in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Today is March the eighth is the first day of the Novina Prayer to St. Patrick's. We have several St. Patricks in our midst. Almighty God, we humbly offer these devotions in honor of thy servant Patrick. Our apostle and patron, we humbly beseech thee through his merits and intercessions to grant us the favor we ask. Devotion one. Grant trustees, staff, enlightenment, so that together we may fulfill our advocacy as servant leaders in Catholic education. So today is also the first day of the devotion. O Gloria, St. Patrick, model of charity obtained for us by the merits and intercession, the grace of perfect charity, that we may love God above all things and our neighbors as ourselves. Devotion one. St. Patrick, we pray for you for the invocation of the virtues, the natural world, the sun, fire, lightning, wind, life itself. Invoke within us God's wisdom, his eyes, his ear, his hand, and protect us from false prophets, heathens, heretics, witches, and wizards. Devotion two. St. Patrick, protect us through the strength of heaven, so that we may harness God's might to uphold us, God's wisdom to guide us, God's word to speak for us, God's shield to protect us afar and the near, alone or in a multitude. Amen. In the name of the Father, the Son, the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Good night.